Robin, is Robin here?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Don't feel like spilling your coffee.
Did you?
You did?
I did, I wiped it out.
Oh.
Thank you. I got hangy and took care of it. Okay, are you done? Okay, meeting's at the hour of nine o'clock, we'll call this meeting in order and have Roll call.
Hess.
Here.
Bobbitt.
There.
Bye.
Here. Cindy, would you lead us in a word of prayer, please?
Dear heavenly fathers we gather here today, we bow our heads and our knees down to you to give you the praise and the glory that you deserve. We thank you for all the blessings that you give to each and every one of us and the many things that you give us and all the blessings that we take, dear Lord. We ask that you be with our troops, whether they're overseas or on U.S. soils, and be with their families, dear Lord, as they continue to make this world a better place to live, dear Lord, so that we have the right to honor you because we are one nation under God, dear Lord. And again, I thank you for the many blessings. I ask that you be with us throughout our meeting today as we do the work of our county and our people, dear Lord, that we will still our hearts and open them and listen to you and please give us the guidance and the direction that we need here today. I ask that you keep everybody out of harms way and again, I thank you so much for the blessings that you bestow on us. I say so in my precious name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Take the lead, please, and salute, please. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Meeting Act.
Comments from the public on the below agenda items? Anybody signed up?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Item six. Item A, Health Department billing of Grant County Health Department payroll.
I have some of these, but we have a meeting scheduled, right?
That's what you need to tell us what we've got. Okay, you've been contacted by Health Department.
Yes, we've been contacted by Keith Reed, well, actually his Deborah, let me give you her name. From the Health Department. And eight, March the 12th at 10 o'clock.
And she had wanted somebody from the board to attend.
Is that the, it's the Monday, is that the 12th or the 11th?
It's a Tuesday, isn't it?
Tuesday.
Oh, it's a Tuesday, that's right. Twelve, yeah, that's right.
Tuesday at 10 o'clock.
That's right, yeah.
And she was wanting somebody from the board to attend.
Right, right.
Max, I didn't know if you wanted to go or who you wanted to go to that, but since we can't all go because of the COVID. They had requested to meet out of open office so that they could present all their documentations before and then we could bring it back to the board, but they wanted to bring all their documentations and they didn't really want to do it in open meetings. They had contacted me, but if you want to go to that, Max, I would just gladly sign that off. Somebody needs to go.
Okay, well, one of us will go, we'll decide. Okay, thank you. Item B, transfers of appropriations.
None.
None. Item C, purchase orders and travel claims. Review.
Oh, I'm sorry, I take a motion to review payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
Okay. It's been moved and it's been seconded to review purchase order and travel claims. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Bye.
You're asking your hand over that one.
Yes, we are.
I need to approve the payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
Been moved and seconded to pay for children's travel claims, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Blanket purchase orders.
None.
None? Yeah, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was one there. I'm glad you talked to me.
I'd like to approve blanket purchase orders.
Okay, been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye. Okay, before we do item E, let's drop down to item nine, executive session. There's a couple different things on there for executive session.
I would make a motion to move from item B to item nine and go into executive session.
All seconded, though. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Bobbitt. I mean, Hess, I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry, two years is a long time to get Hess.
Yes.
Bobbitt.
Yes.
Bye. Sorry about that.
Nine oh seven.
Do they need Robin?
At 9:56, I'd make a motion to re-intervene your session.
All seconded up?
Okay, it's been moved and seated, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Father?
Aye.
Right?
We are now back in regular session.
I'll make a motion to direct Stephen Young to follow up with Rock Falls Farm and the Sheriff's Office payroll information and to get back with us on it.
All seconded up?
Okay, it's been moved and seated to direct Stephen Young to follow up on the Rock Falls Wind Farm and the Sheriff's Office payroll discussion and get back with us. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Father? Right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, that concludes item 11. We'll get back up here to item E, payroll. And have payroll presented. Yes, nice half of it.
His here.
Yeah.
And so we've got six hours left. So we're talking hours of work.
Hmm, I see what you're saying.
What did he hear?
No, that's for the family.
Did you have those back up on you?
Did I have one?
That was back up on you. Right there. Did you have a problem?
Okay.
No.
Oh, that's in the basement.
So... He could...
Eighteen hours?
He could work eighteen hours, possibly.
Yeah, that's what that is.
Okay.
The main drain is plugged. And has a hole in it that we believe under the slabs that they're gonna have to cut us actually out.
It's in your basement?
Yeah, but it's mainly the washer seems...
Oh, God.
Yeah.
He's also sent me a sheet where he went off so many days up until the election time. That paperwork of yours with the POs are first sorted down claims and things.
Oh, oh, what did you call it?
Two up?
Hi, would you like the POs? They're finished. Oh, wrong side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which ones do you like up there? Which one do you want?
I'll be right outside if they need me.
Yeah, those will all be on that test assignment until my conference. I'll see you next Friday.
Oh, okay.
Next Friday.
Okay. All right. I'll be careful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you seen all of those?
I believe so.
I know it's D3, so...
Nope, we're just not getting here. Oh, I...
I noticed that black...
I just got back last night. I didn't look at my payroll yet. So I'm gonna hand these to you. They're gonna be down here. And you can... And you can, after you look at it, you stick it in there.
Oh, we did.
Oh, that's okay.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Things may look better.
That's okay. You've been, you're probably been wagged.
We paid the, we paid the vacation, uh, didn't get that paid care.
Got you.
Uh, yeah, I'm pretty, yeah, I mean, I instructed her to sign the same idea. But I'll double check and make sure. Oh, no, that's not that. What was it in that sheriff's office? Here's the sheriff's, I don't remember, is it in, was it in there or not for this?
Hi, have we run the, um, on Stephen Beal? Did we run for his ninety-six hours? Or have we already done that?
I think we did that Monday.
We did.
I think so.
You think you saw it?
I think we did that Monday.
Oh, was that done on Monday? Or was it in this stuff? Okay, and it should be in sheriff's office? Oh. Do you mind coming in for a sec? Okay.
I've been looking for.
Stephen Beal.
Steve Beal.
They didn't submit anything to me.
We're gonna have to have something submitted for our paperwork.
Okay, they're done. I mean, I just, I knew I was supposed to do it.
Yeah, 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 you might have.
You want me to call them and ask or something? Okay, thank you. Uh-huh.
Or, or, hey, what you could do is take the copy of last month's where we didn't pay it and just stick it in there and say, "Pay."
Okay.
It'd work.
Okay, I'll do that.
I would move to approve payroll.
I second that.
It's been moved and it's been seconded to approve payroll. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbin?
Aye.
Fight?
Aye.
Motion carried. Revised shell contract FY eighteen nineteen with Mabel Smitters.
Okay, we got a question. And I've, I've shown here that it's revised.
Yes, okay. This was the contract that we had originally had with Mabel, years ago it was with Mabel and Webb Trust. Then Mabel bought up documenta, or her son bought up documentation that said they owned all the men's roles. So, we took it up to the, to Stephen, and Stephen said, "Yeah, they've got the documentation shows that they owe all the men's roles." So, we paid it just to her. Well, they, they've come to another agreement, even though it was a verbal agreement that was before her husband dead, was deceased. They decided to honor the verbal agreement. So now, we're gonna go back to splitting it fifty-fifty and stuff.
Okay. So you're making a motion to.
Oh, excuse me, yes, I make a motion to approve the revised shell contract for FY eighteen nineteen with Mabel Smitters. Uh, is that the, was March first or, or Jacob Mary first?
I did, I did, I'm making a, I didn't really come to the effective date, so.
Okay, I think it was, okay, I think it's, I think we started doing that when, which they notified us by phone. When, in the day we notified us by phone was the date it was supposed to be.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Says this contract will expire June thirtieth.
Yeah, but it became effective, we're not, we're not going back to prior years. I think it became effective, I'm gonna say February first.
That's fine, yeah.
So that would be my motion that it became effective February first. We were just waiting for the signatures.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Uh, yes.
Aye.
Bobbin?
Aye.
Fight?
Aye.
I think there's a copy for that too.
No.
I think we gave this.
Did I give you?
I think it's.
I thought I made copies.
I think we've got them.
Okay. Sorry for so many copies, but I wanna give back everyone's.
Right, exactly. Yeah, because Mabel will need a real relative, you know.
Yeah.
Hey, item G. Uh, PR twenty-four, change to two-by-two, uh, acoustical ceiling rather than two-by-four on the first floor of the courthouse, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
And that would be the, uh, hallway, the entrance and out there, not the offices, but.
Okay.
They put in the four-by, four-by-two, or two-by-two.
Yeah, drywall sub contract we did.
I haven't done it yet because we haven't approved it.
Oh, that's true, yeah, yeah, but that's what, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that's what they're looking at doing was in the hallway.
All right, sounds good. Um, I would move, let's see, that's a separate, okay, I would move, move to approve PR twenty-four, change to two-by-two acoustical ceiling floors for the courthouse first floor for four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
I'll second that. Hey, it's been moved and it's been seconded to approve. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbin?
Aye.
Fight?
Aye.
Motion carried. Do we have anything to sign?
No.
Okay. Um, item H, PR twenty-five, add a concrete slab around, uh, two sewer cleanouts adjacent to the southeast corner of the sheriff's office driveway, eight hundred and forty dollars.
And what that is, is on the east side, uh, so it'd be the southeast side, there's two things sticking up. And they're suggesting, like, putting a cement thing and some kind of barrier around it to keep, because it's a sewer line or whatever to keep, because it's right there at, at the edge of the driveway.
Where to protect it from being hit by car tires.
Mm-hmm. Because they said it's already been hit a couple of times.
It's south, it can't be.
Well, like, where that little monument thing is, not the big one, but the one that's.
Well, we do, we drive there? Or is it, oh, for the sheriff's parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, on the southeast corner of the sheriff's.
I got you, I got you.
In that where they all pull in and park in there. So it'd kind of be that, that wall, close to that wall that they closed in the garage doors.
And so.
And it's so like, like, here's the garage door thing's over here, and so here's the corner, like, this is the corner of the building. And these are the garage doors and they're kind of sitting over.
I mean, wouldn't there be, uh, like, something cheaper, like, those pole posts, you know, those new, those, I don't know, maybe they'd be higher, those steel, you know, like those.
Pies.
Or something, but eight hundred and forty.
Well, we'd call Jim if you wanna call him, you wanna call Jim Hamlin?
Well, we either call him or call, uh, Scott.
Eight hundred and forty dollars for a year today?
Welcome Burgers. Welcome Burg, yep.
I mean, I don't know.
Well.
It's not a big area, it is.
I know, how, I don't know how big this slab is, do you?
Four sacks of concrete and concrete.
Yeah, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Should we walk over and look at it? We can. You wanna walk over and look at it?
Yeah, let's do, because that does seem like a lot of money, but, uh. Entertaining motion to go ahead and reset.
No, we, you know, we.
Well, we can't, we can't, we can't.
We're just gonna, let's walk over, it's not like our job, we'll walk over and look at it and be right back.
What?
I'm gonna slip my jacket on.
I am too.
What's going on with you?
I'm gonna go, Cindy, you might, okay, I'll.
What's going on with you?
Nothing, I've been cleaning and cleaning up everything.
I noticed.
We have. We've moved a couple of things out of our little sponsor of our room.
Yeah.
Because we were cleaning out cabinets, and I said, "We're not gonna clean it out and put the stuff back in." They'd have to take it out again, so we just moved it over to the other room.
Yep.
That they're not gonna do anything with, and do that, and looks so nice. It only does, makes it much better.
Sheriff had a meeting in Guthrie today, so he was headed out, I've got one next Friday. Coda.
What'd they do with his thing?
Tabled it, let, um, Stephen look into it.
Hey, you're all pissed.
You're not.
I know.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Just hooked in what?
What's the matter?
Do you wanna sing? You can sing if you want. Is it still on and gone?
Mm-hmm.
They didn't recess.
Oh.
You sound like you're a lot better, too. I am, I still get congested a little bit.
I know, my cough is still with me after two weeks, it's crazy.
Yeah.
Oh, shit. I wish I were a fish. That?
Yes.
I'm having some problems with this eye. Every time I wake up every morning, it's like really worse, you know? So, I don't know whether it's allergies or if it's the sinus thing going on.
Mm, sinus.
I've never had that before.
Yeah. I've never had sinus infection or anything like that ever.
Really? Yeah, I'm not going there.
Yeah, I don't like nothing.
That also ties into that new pump pit that they put in down there in the sheriff's basement. So, that's what that is.
Okay.
It's all tied in there.
Okay.
Trying to call him again.
You want me to call him?
Yeah.
He doesn't answer. Let me see if Jim- you want me to call Jim Hamlin because he was-
Yes.
Hi, is Jim Hamlin available?
It's Jim.
Hi, Jim. This is Cindy Fratton. You're in the- on speaker. We're in the county commissioners' meeting.
Oh.
And so, they- hi. They have a question.
We were just- just going over the proposals or requests and request or proposal 25, adding some cement around some cleanouts.
Yes, sir.
Are you- is that just a slab or is that gonna be cement with a railing?
No, it'll only be a couple inches tall, sir.
Only a couple inches tall?
The cleanouts stick out of the ground maybe six inches. And it's just the concrete around there to protect them from a car backing over them and breaking them off.
Okay, even though the- if the concrete's only gonna be two inches, you're gonna raise that all up so that's all flush?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The cleanouts are, uh, there's, I think, three of them, and they're all grouped pretty close together.
Yeah, I think there's two of them and there's- they're- they're out of the ground like three or four inches.
Yes, sir. That's- that's all we're trying to do is protect those from being driven over.
Okay.
Is there a steel plate gonna be put over the top of that, of that plastic?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Is there a steel plate going to be put over the top of the plastic?
Is there a steel plate gonna be put over the top of the plastic, the question was?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I mean, we can, but I- we haven't planned on it.
Right.
Well, what's to keep a car from driving over a piece of cement slab and still hitting it? I mean, I would see that they could still hit it unless you're gonna put it above the top of those caps and then, like you said, cover it with something.
No, we can't put it above the top of the caps because we still have to be able to take those caps off.
Well, yeah, I mean-
But you put a ring- you put a ring around it and put a plate on top of that.
Put a top of the cam over it.
Take the plate off and then take the- and then access the connection.
Yeah, we can do that. That's why I'm-
I mean, that's- that's, uh, because still they could drive over the cement and hit that PVC and it would still damage it.
Sure, we can get a plate on top of that.
Either that or put a railing around it and, uh-
Yeah, we just- we thought maybe would steel pipes be a better option on that? Easier and cheaper just to stick some steel pipes in there?
I don't know how we connect the steel pipes to the plastic pipes that are already there.
No, like a- like a barrier that you see in a parking lot.
Oh, a baller, you mean?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That definitely- let me- let me look at- yeah, don't approve this today. Let me look at that option. I mean- I understand your concerns. Let me- let me see what I can do with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Bye-bye.
Okay, so, no action on 25. Item I, acknowledge remaining contingency balance of phase one, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. But we don't want no action on that, I don't guess, because we may change that.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so, right.
Okay, so, no action on that. Item J, courthouse renovation and relocation of offices.
I'm just kinda leaving that on as a standard. But I will say, I did visit with Max and, um, and he said it was okay. So, Larry Hand and I met at Ponkin, went to the portable buildings, um, just to kinda see what he thought would need to be done there. His suggestions were just to put up- he said it'd be very easy to put up just like some temporary- well, I guess, you know, once it's determined who's gonna be in what offices. But he said it probably would be better and cheaper for us just to like order our own carpet, order our own toilets and stuff. But then they would- now, the carpet, he said, "I would just rip the old carpet up and roll the new carpet down." And he said, "Just get something cheaper." I'm saying, you know, so I was gonna do some checking on that, if you like. And then, he said they could, you know, patch the walls and things like that or, you know, any- there's some that need to be painted and stuff. So, whether we wanna paint, we want them to paint, you know? And then, he said as far as the toilets and stuff, if we would buy them, then he would, you know, they would take care of it and stuff. So, and he's supposed to be kinda working on up some numbers and stuff for us, so.
Well, we need to get them moved before we do anything.
Yeah, exactly. Right, right, right.
Yeah, we need to find a place for them.
Yeah. Which- and I did speak to the Ponca City School District as well. Deborah's who I'm dealing with, which is Brett Smith's assistant. Her name is Deborah Gooch. I think it's G-O-O-C-H. It's G-O-U-C-H. I'm not for sure.
No, I think it's G-O-O-C-H. There used to be Gooches in each other.
Oh, okay, okay. And, uh, you know, all is good as far as, you know, yes, we've gotten the buildings and all that. She did want us to know that they are also going to go into renovation over there before long. But, um, but it's Kyler that's doing it. So, they're aware of that those buildings are coming out. When I was over there, I- the gentleman we met with when we went and looked at the buildings was from the maintenance department. And he was asking about the awnings in between and all that. And I told him, "Yes, we wanted to take those with him because they had someone asking if we didn't want them, they wanted them." And I said, "No, I'm pretty certain we're wanting to take all of that stuff with us." So, that's kinda where I'm at.
Okay. All righty, I will get with, uh, I will get with, um, eighty-one feeds and talk to them and see if what they've come up with on everything and see where we're at.
I did also talk to Kel Pro.
Okay.
And kinda they said, you know, they'll just- they're just kinda bidding it all separate because they can't really bid it the same, I guess. I don't know why.
Doesn't make sense if it's the same company.
Yeah, so, Daniel is working on some quotes. So, I- I mean, I don't know if it's- I don't know if it's really gonna save it. He said there'll be some savings if you do it all at the same time. But he said for the most part, all the cost would be pretty much like they'll, you know, he's, I think, giving you a-
Brandon.
Giving her a quote. And so, anyway, I'll wait and see what I get from them and then we'll go from there. Because that didn't make sense to me either. I would think that if you move everyone at the same time, which it should save us on their travel time and their motels or whatever that expires.
But not on hours. This is gonna take them longer.
Not on the hours.
Well, we can't have everybody move the same day. I mean, we've gotta be around the road, everybody. Everybody be in the road of each other.
So, we need to- so, we need to- Cindy, did- have we gone out for bids yet to move those buildings? I guess we can't until we know we're removing them two.
No, I have- no, we have, yeah.
So, let's try to- we'll try to nail that down next week and see where we're going to move them to. So, that we can go out for bids and get them moved. And then, we probably need to sit down and come up with a plan on where everybody's going to move. So, they- they obviously know where they're going to move. You know, the- I'll just recap a little bit of what we talked about earlier with the court clerk's office. Obviously, my building will be able to accommodate. We've got that figured out. It's come to my attention, and we was talking about maybe the district attorney's office moving to the district shop as well. We had a room available. But, you know, we have a lot of fumes and other things that go on in there. We're worried about some health in that one. That one back room has- does not have very good ventilation. All the other rooms have doors and windows and, you know, that other one's more of a closed center room and not much use there.
I have a big air purifier that I would be willing to let, you know, that, yeah.
It's like about this big.
Yeah, that- the break room. It's the one in the middle of the building.
I thought that was gonna be the deliberation room for a jury.
That's what we need a jury room. That's what I failed to think about is in July, we are still set up for a jury. So, we have to have a room available onsite. That cannot be- we cannot bus people on a jury. They have to be sequestered. So, I think that with that being said, that we're going to have to figure out the district attorney's office. I think we're only gonna be able to move the court clerk there. We have two options for the district attorney. We went and looked at a office space, um-
Darren Locke.
Darren Locke, thank you.
By the clinic.
By the clinic. He's got an office space.
It's super nice.
Really nice. Or the other option is to put him in the building and he'd have one room. And then, we'd just put everybody else in the other three rooms. And if that's too crowded, if Penny still wanted to move over to the motel room, we can figure that out.
Again, it isn't Penny that wants to move over to the hotel room. It was Penny offering you an option as is stated in the February 4th minutes. An option for the entire gang to be together, but-
So, you don't wanna- you-
I'm not asking to be moved into the motel by myself.
Okay, that-
I- if you would read the option that I gave you, it was the entire ten of us moving over there.
So, anyway, that would, uh, so, that's- I'm gonna have to get with- with Stephen and see what- what he would prefer to do. It obviously would save us money if we all got into that building. But I think the logistics of trying to figure it all out, we might just put him in a separate one. But we've gotta figure out because he uses Dean as server.
Yeah, but they said that was not a problem because it's not-
They thought they could- they thought they could march away.
Yeah, they said it was they did not have to be in the same building.
Okay, okay.
Okay, now-
And I was- And I was gonna tell you, my- my IT department called this morning, and they will be here on Tuesday.
Okay, too.
Just kinda see. So, we might be up and back.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay?
Absolutely.
They're gonna see what they can do. But yeah, Stephen does not have to be on- in the same office.
Okay. All right. So, so, that's where we are. So, I think what we need to do now is we've got to find out from eighty-one feeds what the- his- what- what the cost would be there. Obviously, it's already gravelled. We see it checking into the electrical. I think he called, I think, to talk to Scott Falkenburg about what the power was. And I think maybe Larry Hand, since they were familiar with the power load was.
I had- I had called Larry and asked them about if they could get some idea of what load we would need. I have since talked to Patrick Lyons, who's OGN E representative here. And he was gonna get back with Scott Falkenburg. And they was gonna look at what our usage was here right now and get some kind of an idea. And now, he was gonna get back. And then, uh, we needed that information so they could, uh, what's his name? Eighty-one Feeding Seed.
Oh, Brady Sidwell.
Brady Sidwell had contacted OGN E about what they needed there. So, we called over and got the breaker box sizes from the school over there.
Okay.
And I called Patrick back and told him what them were. So, they've got an idea what that load is gonna have to be for them offices. Now, we might need more or less depending on what they come up with here.
Right. And well, and the thing is, we're not gonna be moving the- we're- it's only gonna be the first four. So, we're not moving the second and third floor or going other places.
Other places.
So, and if we're- are we in with the sheriffs? See, we won't need them at all.
Right.
So, it's gonna be difficult to figure that out.
Of what our electrical load is.
Of what our electrical load is.
Well, he basically told me that they were gonna check. And I don't know how they would know between the meter, if the meter's tied in with-
Yeah, do we get- do we get- do we do? Or do we get two bills here for the sheriff and us? I don't know. How do we get- do we get two bills or one?
I think it's one, not for her.
Okay. You could probably just- I would say if you've got a whole load on this building, I think you could almost say a third of it or forty percent.
Courthouse question?
The third floor, the LSU probably doesn't have much load at all.
For the sheriff's officer, do we just receive one bill for the whole?
Okay.
Courthouse and sheriff.
We need to get- make sure we get that clarified. We don't need to overbuild.
Right.
Having overbuild that.
Right. Okay, that being said, if we have the two buildings, we get the two buildings over here, does anybody have any preferences as to who wants to be in the same building? Or do we need to have the clerk's office and the treasurer's office in the same? Or the assessor's office and the clerk's office in the same? Or how- what works out?
Well, it's gonna- it's gonna be really close because the two buildings are gonna be twenty-four by sixty. And they're gonna sit like this, Max. And they have this awning deal that bridges it. It's covered.
Right, right.
And you got a door here and a door here and a door here and a door here. And I think, if I remember right, this might be ten or twelve feet here. So, basically, you're gonna- I don't think it's not like you're- it's-
You're not two blocks away.
And if you're- if it's raining outside, you're gonna have it covered. So, you can still go from building to building. I don't think that'll be a problem. I- I don't know, um, you know, what- what we'll do. But we'll just, um, I still think that, um, the clerk, we could- maybe the clerk could- we gotta figure out what to do with Stephen. Stephen's gonna be our first concern if we put him in the building or if we put him in a separate deal. Because if we put him in the building, he's gonna get one home space to himself. I know it's only two people that needed for the- for the-
Privacy.
Privacy of it, yeah. So, and then the other ones we'll have to figure out.
So, one building is twenty-four by sixty?
They're both- each one of them is twenty-four by sixty. And each have bathroom- each has two bathrooms. And I don't know if we would want to make one set of the bathrooms public and one set, uh, employees.
The way they're kinda set up is basically this office will have a bathroom, this office will have a bath, but-
Yeah, that's kind of- they're kinda set up a little funky.
Oh, I see what you're saying, like one-
But I didn't know, you know, like here, we have one set of bathrooms that are public and one set of bathrooms that are private. But with- if you do that, the private one would have to be- if the district attorney went in there, we'd have to figure out how to keep that bathroom out of his office. So, we'll have to-
But we won't have near the foot traffic in that building if the-
I would not. And Cindy, I mean, we were gonna ask you to- we- we would prefer to put no public restrooms at your office on our docket days.
Oh, oh.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Should we get a couple of porta-potties?
No.
Just a sign that says no public restroom?
Yeah, and we- they will be- we're gonna give them something in May and tell- give them directions, tell them, you know, where to go, which end to go to into the courtroom. And so, they're not traipsing through the front door on the carpet and just not put. I mean, most people can- if you- we tell them, "Hey, guess what?" And we're gonna tell them, the judge was gonna tell them, "This isn't a heyday. So, don't bring mom and dad, grandma and grandpa, and the two little twins because that's what they do." You know, and just say, you know.
Well, Deana, another option is- is we could- there are those, I don't know what they cost, but they have portable bathrooms that are water and sewer- you know, you hook them into a sewer line and, you know, electric and- into a sewer line and, you know, electric and you go up a ramp type deal.
Now, our jury trials would be different. We might do that. But just for like our big docket, we're not going to have a docket in June.
Well, porta potties cost, if you got one porta potty for an emergency, I mean, somebody might have an emergency, but we could get, it's eighty bucks, like eighty-five bucks a month. And we could have a porta potty there.
Well, if it was an emergency, we could let them go. We're just saying that.
Basically, we advertise no public bathroom.
Yeah.
If you can hold it, go down the street.
Yeah, I mean.
Next business.
Go before you get there. You know, like I say, if, if that's okay with you, we would go.
If we can do that without, you know, violating anybody's rights or anything like that, that I have no problem as long as, is there some statute that says if you're a public building, you have to? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Check with the judge.
Okay. We were just going to ask that, thought that might help a little bit.
I'd be fine.
On the carpet, on the trailers, if you're talking about that, if, if the districts are maybe going to use those after we're done with them, would you consider tile or linoleum or something else other than carpet? Because that's going to be more difficult for you to clean if it goes to one of your districts.
We don't know where they're going to go.
We don't know where they're going to go, but I'm open to linoleum.
Well, no, actually, linoleum costs more.
That was the, that was why they said carpet.
Actually, not if you replace it several times, like the carpet. It's, if it goes to a district, it's going to get really dirty really fast.
Well, I've carpet, Dana, I've carpet mine. What did you think of our carpet?
Looks better than what I have. I mean, honestly, yeah, there's, that's the reason why I didn't want, we want the people to come in.
Through the.
The north door, uh huh, over there and not come through your door with their muddy feet, like for docket days and stuff. I mean, just somebody come in and pay a traffic ticket, yeah, we understand. But. No, your carpets.
Well.
I'm sorry, it's better than what, it's good.
Get the basics done and get started.
I just think you get some, some carpet like this or whatever.
He said just that, he said, oh, you pay someone to lay it down. He said, I'd just lay it down.
It's so wide, you just roll it to length. Roll it to length, it's all one color.
Actually, you can get carpet pretty cheap.
Yeah.
You can get that done pretty cheap.
And you couldn't, you couldn't be able to split.
I mean, it's not real bad, but like you said, a lot of little children have been across that, I mean, there's stains on it. So, I mean, it's not, it's no worse than what we're sitting, standing on. I mean, or like in my, it's no worse than what's in my office right now. But it's not that bad, but it's still.
So we maybe wouldn't even need to get new. We maybe wouldn't even need to get new then.
That may be.
Yeah. I mean, that was just a suggestion. In one of the buildings, it does have, I'm sorry, it does have a, like they have, where the scene was, they have, it has a big piece of red tape. Well, one of them's got like frogs on it or something with the tape. So it's got a big, you know, so that's very noticeable. But the other one isn't that bad.
Do you have pictures that anybody can see?
Um.
Dimensions even? Would they say twenty-four by sixty?
Either that or, I mean, like I said, if we needed.
Both of them, right?
Like Lowe's has those portable buildings down there.
But then you got a Takiti, you know, so I don't know.
All right, so well, I'll get.
These are cheap.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. You're right. So, all righty, well, I'll get, that's, that's what our holdup is as to see where we're going to move it. So I'll see if I can, where he, what he's got going on next week and see if he's gotten any information. I know Dia had been gone the week before, but I think she was back this week.
Yeah, she's back.
Maybe he's got some information on that.
Okay. Anything else on that? We're down to new business? Cindy, do you have any new?
I actually do have, I was contacted yesterday by Robin Fast of the OS, Oklahoma State Auditor's Office. Yesterday afternoon, she called and they will be here on March the eighteenth to start working on our audit. And they have requested a location. Well, she said, well, I guess we'll be in the conference room. And I said, well, I don't know, I don't know because we have our meetings. She said they'd be here possibly up to eight weeks. And she said that, you know, they just needed, there was going to be four of them coming, two men and two women, and that they would need a place to have their stuff where they could all be together. So I did ask the girls and they said last time they were in the commissioner's office, well, because I explained to her that we have our board meetings once a week and that we video them. And she said, well, we need somewhere where we can be in there without having to move our stuff, you know, once a week or whatever, so.
Yeah, before we had an emergency meeting, after they were in that office. I'm just thinking out loud here, but I'm wondering, with us trying to get moved out by the middle of May, would they consider waiting to do our audit at a later time?
They've already started. They've already pulled data from my office, they've pulled data from her office.
Did you know that?
Dorinda was here last week.
So you've done a letter?
No, no, that, that's what Robin said that we was going to do March the eighteenth. Dorinda.
We're meeting, you and her and I are supposed to meet with the auditors.
After?
On the eighteenth.
After the eighteenth, after, that's when she's coming. Robin called me yesterday and said that she was bringing the, the.
Letter of engagement.
Letter of engagement. And we, and wanted to talk to us right after the meeting.
Right.
They was potentially the March eighteenth.
Yes.
Okay, so, so did you know before they came? I'm just curious.
No, I didn't know until.
Yesterday?
Yeah.
Monday. They, she was here Monday, right?
Was she Monday or Tuesday?
No, it was Monday because it was Monday, I think.
Yeah.
Because she wasn't here.
And, but, but, you know, I didn't know whether that was customary, that they come before we do the letter of engagement or, or what, you know? Is it happening?
I don't know. I don't know. I will tell you that, in my understanding, according to statutes, the board of county commissioners is in charge of the courthouse. And I would have figured that they would have contacted either the chair or our secretary, and I think Cindy serves as our secretary if they were going to do an audit. I just have concerns of their overreaching powers and if they're not following, you know.
Well, we, we do have a new state auditor and maybe she thought somebody else was contacting Max. I don't know.
Yeah.
But.
I guess that's.
They do have a job to do.
You might reach out to Cindy Bird and just ask her for a follow-up on that. But you might also tell her that we are in the process of going through renovation and we're going to be having to move out by the middle of May. And I don't know if that would interfere with them or not.
Yeah, well, you know, if they said eight weeks, if we started on the eighteenth, that'd be one, two, three, four, five, six. Yep, about the twentieth of May.
It's going to be May, however, I don't know.
That's what I said.
What does, what does it matter if we push our moving back, though?
We can't.
I mean, we can't push our moving back.
No, we've already advertised and already gone and all that, trying to get it done to, for the juries and all of that. So no.
I don't think that that's an option at this point.
I don't either. I, I think, Ma, I don't know, Cindy or Max, I think that's your, you probably ought to.
We might on a call and talk to the auditor about, possibly, because.
Make a conference call with them.
Okay. Because I, I, I can see this thing not getting done in the eight weeks.
Oh, I could.
Or something, you know, it has in the past.
And as we're trying to move file cabinets. We're going to start, we get our buildings done, we're going to start moving file cabinets and stuff. So Cindy, I'll check in.
Let's, let's call her.
Well, if we moved and they wanted to do it after that and we could utilize for a while that back room, we could have a court.
As long as we didn't have a jury. Well, but the problem is going to be, you're going to have documentation in the trailers and you're going to have documentation in the courthouse.
So we might need to ask them if they could put it off until, until we get moved back into our building in November, you know? I would hope maybe they would try to accommodate us on that.
Okay.
I think that would be a good idea to see if they could accommodate us on that.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds like a winner. Anything else new?
We don't have anything else.
No other new business, Cindy?
No.
Okay. Dean, do you have any new business?
I have none.
Cindy, Bob?
I have none.
None? I don't have none either. Number eight, commissioner's comments?
Well, we're just kind of like we were beginning of the week. Snow's gone and weather's warming up and we're getting able to go do some things when it's not so bitterly cold. Hydraulics are working better and not freezing up, so we're still maintaining roads.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing new and exciting there as far as that goes. We do have a, a bridge that we're waiting for it to warm up a little bit more so that we can pour the top. And looking at some other bridges to replace and some culverts and around that are in need of replacement. And pretty much same old thing, so.
Okay. Cindy, what do you have?
All right, well, Robert and Donnie Head are moving or out inspecting. We have a guy here to look at our crack seals on Inman Road that we had just done last year. They met at nine thirty, they were thinking, I was thinking, I apologize, I was thinking all we had when that was set up was payroll.
I'm sorry.
And before you know it, it was just a block. Yeah, exactly. So that's no problem. So anyway, so they're out, they're out looking at that and hopefully we'll get some answers back on that to figure out what, what the, what the issue was there and where we go from here again. And at one o'clock today, I do have a special board meeting on the Wheat Hart nutrition. As, as always, the funding has really dried up on that and we're going to be looking at addressing what we're going to do if we have to close sites or we can barely make payroll. Can't make our other bills. We're having some, some difficulties there, so. And as you know, I just got back last night from Washington DC where we had our National Association of Counties legislative meetings. We had some very good meetings. We was on the Hill. I spoke on Tuesday in the Longworth House office along with Representative Earl Blumner. He is from Oregon and with Representative Hank Johnson from Georgia and Representative Donald Payne from New Jersey. And then a couple of other county commissioners also was, spoke on that. And I was spoke about the importance of a strong federal, state, local partnership and why it is important to reauthorize the FAST Act, which is going to expire September of 2020. And, and in that is our STP funds, which Max, that's the money how you're building Clyde Road. And, you know, we're also use the, some of those funds on matching, we get the federal funds to match our, our bridges, the two bridges you're getting ready to build. So it's very important that we do that. The good news is, if there is any good news, it hasn't happened, but Representative Blumner has agreed to run a bill this year to increase the federal user fee, also known as, people like to call it gas tax. But as we know, it is a user fee for the privilege of using the roads and that's how we pay for them. It, the last time it was raised federally was in nineteen ninety-three and here we are in two thousand nineteen and with inflation and everything else, we are just completely upside down and cannot support that. Both sides of the party, a pothole isn't blue and a pothole isn't red. So it doesn't matter if it's a Democrat or if it's a Republican, a pothole is a pothole and it needs fixed. So that, I would say transportation is one thing that the federal government does understand is something that, that we can all come to the table and work on. You know, Trump, when he took office, kept talking about his one, one trillion to one point five trillion infrastructure investment. So one thing that he had did do was the two hundred and twenty-five million dollar war grant. And I did check on that when I was back there with the Federal Highway Administration. Got to speak to some people there and it is on hold. It's, when they had the government shut down for those three weeks, it kind of got pushed aside. They're trying to catch up on those three weeks before they start looking at grants again. So anyway, we, I will keep my eye definitely on that. The other issue we have is the trust fund. The trust fund is going to be, which is our gas tax, will be, will, is already behind, it's broke. We'll have zero dollars in it by twenty twenty-one if the rate we're going, so. Some good conversation. Obviously, we also talked about mental health in, in the jails and our opid crisis. And we just covered a long range of things that are important to Oklahoma. But it was, it was a very good meeting.
Okay.
And that's all I've got.
Well, you had a busy time up there, it sounded like. So glad to hear that our funding deal is still in the works.
Yep, we're still on, on, still in the works, still on the table, so that is good news.
Yes, yes. Of course, legislation keeps going on down there. We had the bill that, that bill, that SB, SB four hundred, went ahead and made it out of conference. Roland Peterson voted against it. Appreciated that.
Yeah, there's only two of them. I did too.
Yeah. And that's going to go forward, but that's the bill that allows counties to work inside